76th Board of Education, full call please. Armenta, Hale, here. Hoffman, Candela.
Here.
Juan, here. Lozada.
Here.
Sullivan. Please rise for the Pledgeable Agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Now open the floor for public comments on agenda, you guys. Yes, come on up. Wherever you would like to stand. You're loud, so.
I'm really not getting the microphone out.
Well, this way we'll get you good on the video.
Aww.
We'll send a link to your kids.
I would have done that. I'm really sorry.
Hello, everybody. My name is Elise Hoffman. I am a Vernon Hills resident, and my three children went through District 76 en route to their college, their current colleges of choice. I am here this evening regarding the upcoming IASB Delegate Assembly and specifically Resolution Number One, a proposal that would allow school districts to determine whether to arm their staff. I am vehemently opposed to this resolution for a number of reasons. First, bringing firearms into a school will increase the risk to students and staff. One analysis found over eighty publicly reported incidents of mishandled guns at schools in the last five years. These include a loaded gun falling from a teacher's waistband, a teacher unintentionally firing a class, journey demonstration on safety, and multiple incidents of firearms left unattended in bathrooms. These are just the incidents which have been reported, so we have no idea how many other incidents have gone on. Seventy-five percent of active shooters in schools were current or former students of this school. Are districts going to ask their staffs to potentially shoot a current or former student who is clearly in crisis? Surveys show that the NEA and the AFT oppose arming teachers, as do seven out of ten parents and eight out of ten teachers. Teachers came into their profession to educate, not to serve as law enforcement. Then there is the issue of how school personnel would be trained. Law enforcement officers receive an average of 168 hours on weapons, self-defense, and the use of force. No school district can afford that amount of training time. Further, trained police officers have only a 30% accuracy rate when discharging a weapon in a crisis situation, and proficiency with weapons is an actual part of their job. While I empathize with rural school districts who have longer response times from law enforcement agencies, many alternatives exist to arming school staff. These include risk assessment and intervention, counseling, and school resource officers on campus. Resolution Three is one option that should be given some serious consideration. Let's also consider if Resolution One were to pass. Districts would face years of legislative battles, IASB lobbyists would have to overturn multiple laws, including a Firearms Concealed Carry Act, which prohibits concealed carry in schools, and the Federal Gun-Free School Zones Act, which makes it illegal for unauthorized individuals to possess firearms in a school. These are just two of the laws mentioned in Resolution One. Then, there would be the initiation of new legislation allowing armed staff in schools. While the IASB lobbyists would be working on legislative issues, the students in rural districts would be getting no safer, and districts throughout the state would be losing lobbying resources to this one issue. Resolution One is a dangerous proposition, which would likely fail in the state legislator and which, if it were to pass, would have frightening consequences. Last year, less than half of Illinois' school boards sent a delegate to vote at the assembly, and Resolution One was only defeated by 24 votes. I urge this board to send a representative to the November 23 meeting and to cast a vote opposing Resolution One. I do have a sheet here that I'd like to hand out to the board members, and I want to thank you all for your service to our community and to our country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other public comments this evening? Okay. Everybody, no further public comments. We're going to move on to the business agenda. The first item up on the business agenda is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Items under the Omnibus Vote Agenda are considered routine and are not controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the Omnibus Vote Agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76th Board of Education accepts and approves the Omnibus Vote Agenda, items A through E as listed below. May I have a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
Lozada?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hoffman? Juan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to personnel. We have one item on the agenda for personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76th Board of Education accepts and approves, the personnel item is depicted on the agenda. We have one leave of absence. May I have a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
Candela?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hoffman? Juan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes our business agenda. Thank you, ladies. Moving on to board's session. Eric, do you have some sort of...
Yes, I would like to turn, instead of the floor, to Eric, who's going to provide a brief summary of each of the three topics, or actually, just two topics.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to provide an update on the crosswalk at Diamond Lake School. So, a few months ago, weeks ago at this point, we've had a concerned citizen that brought up the idea of putting a crosswalk in at Diamond Lake. So, me and Chris Thibodeau investigated different options that we have. We've worked with Hila Township and Lake County Highway Department on some solutions. So, one of which is putting in two curbs and a sidewalk at Diamond Lake Elementary School, and that's really the only way that Hila Township and the Highway Department would move forward on putting any sort of crosswalk in there. So, the cost of that is, I got one estimate from a construction company, about $19,000 to put in that curvature of sidewalk. So, I just wanted to bring back some feedback to the board on what that numbers would look like. Each Highway Department would be in support of it, it would just be depending on if you guys thought that was a reasonable cost to spend on putting a crosswalk in. I'm not entirely sure how many students this would impact. I don't believe it would be a large amount, though.
So, sidewalks and curbs would go where? Across the street from the school?
It would be at like the northmost part of the parking lot. It, to the very, very edge of the parking lot, it would have a little curb in the, right on the side of the road. There would be another one on the other side of the road that Hila will be responsible for. So, they need these two curbs so they can connect the sidewalk to, per requirements there. And then we have a sidewalk that would go on the northmost part of the parking lot to the school, because otherwise, kids wouldn't have a place to walk, they'd have to walk in the parking lot. So, it's a, 600 linear feet of sidewalk and then the associated curbs that would be, you know, part of it. The Highway Department would just strike at that point, so they would bypass essentially the permanent process.
So, the crosswalk would be to the neighborhood across the street there?
Correct.
And the lighting would be just a crosswalk sign with a flasher, or...
There would be no, right now, there'd be no crosswalk or flasher. That'd be an extra, I think it's 2,500 bucks to put that in as well. So, that's something the Highway Department wouldn't be responsible for. If they already did proper signage up, they would put a sign for crosswalk, and then they would just stripe it. There'd be essentially no, there'd be no light like they have over at high school. They have like that little median with the light in the middle of it. So, it wouldn't be something like that unless you wanted, you know, an added cost. So, I guess it'd be my recommendation at this point, without knowing any more students that would be involved, that we don't proceed with this based on the costs, because I don't believe there's a lot of individual students that would be impacted by this.
Is there any way to identify what?
I know there's only...
The numbers would be identified.
Yeah, there's been one parent that, you know, brought to our attention, and I would just have to find out the, basically, the people in that immediate neighborhood there. So, however many homes there are, and, you know, I could gauge if they would be interested in walking if we put in something.
I think that would be good to know before we move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring some, list some initial numbers together before I'd even proceed, so essentially, digest this figure, see if it's something the board was even interested in exploring further before, you know, any work with the opposite, you know, perform.
And that would not, there would be no other access to that crosswalk from other neighborhoods? Like, there's not sidewalks that connect to neighborhoods in other...
No, there's no sidewalks at all in that area. So, you'd, you know, they'd have to walk down the street, then essentially hit a one-foot curb.
Right.
And then it just connects to our sidewalk.
Eric, can you repeat that cost again?
It's about $19,000 for the sidewalk, and then if we wanted to put flashers in or something, that's about an extra 2,500 bucks.
It looks like there's maybe three bus stops?
Yeah, so, the, just for some feedback, yeah, the district does provide busing for every student in that neighborhood, because that is considered a dangerous intersection.
Right.
So, we don't require any students to walk.
No, I'm just saying, to give you an idea of the kids impacted.
Oh, okay.
There's only, from what I can see, there's only three bus stop, three stops, which are likely, you know, one student each.
Okay.
Would be my guess, because I live in that neighborhood, and we don't have any sidewalks. And so, pretty much, it's one or two kids on each stop.
Yeah, and I appreciate that feedback. I was considering, you know, eight or nine at the very high end, and that'd be an aggressive probably number.
I think that's probably 50% more.
Yeah.
It actually impacts currently anyway. For Diamond Lakes, for, you know, there's other kids in there that are going to West Oak, but it's still a very small number of kids.
Yeah, and like you mentioned, with no sidewalks, it's going to be inaccessible for half the year anyway, when there's snow, you're not going to go across that way anyway.
Right.
So, I'll provide, you know, I guess this is the board wanting to provide me any direction if you'd like me to investigate this further, if this is something that you guys are interested in.
I think if you could confirm the number of students, that way we could say, you know, for X amount of students, this is the cost, and, you know, make a better educated decision, or give you a direction that way.
Okay, that's perfect.
I wondered too, if Juliana, who you know that knows, is this student that are walking?
We can look up the addresses for that immediate area, just...
And even, we could even call, just to say, how often are you walking to school, or...
I mean, yeah, it's not very... I've never seen anyone walk to school. Just the one, I do know this one particular family.
So, we can kind of work, we'll work.
She's the only one that I know that does.
Yeah, thank you. I'll work with Juliana on that one.
So, I think that feedback will be helpful. Does anyone want more information?
Yeah, I would agree. I think I might also like the idea of exploring young, just a crosswalk, whether there's sign, which is flashing a light, anything, even if it's just one family today, in future years, or maybe anymore, but also, I'm wanting to understand your perspective where, you know, when the snow heavy months, it's not going to be accessible anyway, so, I'll find a good balance, but certainly, I'm responsible.
Yeah, exactly. I just wanted to explore it more, since it was brought to the board level. I'll provide you guys some more feedback when I get that information. Okay, so, busing. So, there's an attachment in the board book. It's a, it's what I received from Lakeside. It's just a little Excel spreadsheet here. So, in talking with the principals and looking at their routes themselves, there's really two main routes that are, the length has become a big concern to us. So, it's West Oak Intermediate Routes Nine and Route Ten. So, each route is anywhere from 50 minutes to an hour and 10 minutes each day. That's both AM and PM. So, I'd say the majority of the calls that I get in relation to busing, excuse me, is just related to the route time, which I completely understand. It's a lot longer than what we've had in previous years with Durham.
So, Eric, that hour is one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon, or that's a...
Yes.
Combined, no, that's...
Yeah, so, it's roughly two hours. Yeah, the times they gave here, so, on the left side column is the current runtime, so the first top is AM, bottom's PM. These are a little short compared to what they actually are, and they're running about 10 minutes later than that. So, in the past, in these neighborhoods, there's been two buses that have gone, you know, so there'd be two buses for Route Ten, two buses for Route Nine, and each one was just about 30 minutes, more or less, just to get, based on the length, the size of the neighborhood themselves. So, we asked Lakeside to investigate. The first option would be taking a look at the routes that are early each day, and what it would be like if we took students off, took route, stops off those routes and gave it to, I'm sorry, take stops off Routes Nine and Ten and gave it to some of the routes that are arriving early. Best-case scenario, that maybe takes 10 minutes off a route, maybe 15. So, it really doesn't have a big impact, and it would involve making other buses potentially late in that scenario. So, that, that essentially is the free one, where you can have a little impact on the route. The next is adding buses. So, the first column that I highlighted in pink is adding one bus, the second is adding two buses. And I, sorry, my bad hand writing there, it's $288 a day per bus. So, that's part of our contract right now. It is a, it's called a non-shared rate, since we're not doing a triple-tier like we do with our other routes. When we do triple-tier, it's picking up Diamond Lake, then the intermediate school, then the middle school. So, they consider that route being shared, so it's only $165 a day. With this not sharing with anything, the cost is a lot more, so it's something I would work on. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I would say, yeah, I would find, traditionally, that shared rate is meant for, say, we're sharing a bus with District 75. When we went through the bidding process, the fact that our schools are sharing the same bus, we were able to take advantage of a lower pricing. Right now, by providing one bus or two buses to alleviate these routes, we're paying this higher amount. So, the max amount, based on the $288 a day, it's $38,000 a year per bus extra to alleviate these, you know, these routes. Now, that's the highest amount we're going to pay. I've been working with Lakeside, again, this has all just been explored in the last, you know, two or three weeks, once we've got some data. I've been working with them on, can we share this cost with potentially the middle school to alleviate any, like, you know, routes they have that they want? Or I'm working with the business manager at 75, that would potentially share this bus with any routes that are running late. So, this cost would only come down, at the, at the best-case scenario, we'd be looking at about $24,000 a year per bus, and the worst case, we're looking at about $38,000. So, I just wanted to provide some feedback. So, if you're looking at each row, the first column there, it has Bus 11 or Bus 12, that would be the additional buses. So, you'd be cutting the first route down by four minutes, the next one down by about 20 minutes, and then you'd have the other route at 39 minutes. And PM would be a lot quicker, some of those. So, you can see the student counts are just being distributed between those buses there. And two gets each route under 30 minutes, but, you know, obviously, you're adding additional bus for that. So, the benefit of adding additional buses is obviously, we can utilize them and cut down some of our other routes. There's still, these are the worst ones in terms of time, but we still have certain routes that are getting to school late, so we'd be looking to capitalize on that and further utilize, you know, the inefficiencies there, you get students to school early. It's improved a lot, it's just not to where we need it to be. But this is for sure the most immediate concern in terms of student welfare, I would say. The buses are packed with 64 students on Route Nine, which is at least two to a seat at that point, three of the most students on that bus.
Are we sure that all of those numbers are accurate, like, with the number of students?
That's what they pulled from their routing software this week.
Okay. I'm just asking, because a bus tend to be, like, from an observer, it looks like completely full.
Yeah. With two to a seat, anything looks packed. With three to a seat, it's completely overcrowded. So, again, yeah, this is the, this is the data that I at least got from them. But I, it is a big concern in terms of, you know, I've heard from some families that say that they don't have a spot to sit, that maybe if the kids are two to a seat, going to three...
Yeah, that's what I, we, I've heard a lot of that feedback.
Yeah, middle school kids are big, and intermediate school kids are big, and they have the backpacks. It's only going to get much worse.
Well, they just have a lot of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, it's only going to get worse, the coats and things like that. So, yeah, I just wanted to present this data. I'm, I'm fully in support of, you know, finding a solution that, that doesn't just involve pulling from one stop or pulling from one route and giving to another, because that's just not going to be a long-term viable solution. So, the only other thing I'll point out is why this has a cost of $38,000. We do still get reimbursement from the state, although the reimbursement levels vary. Special ed routes, we can reimburse a lot more than regular ed. We'll still see about a 40% return on the cost of this route, based on federal funding.
So, the improvements that have occurred in the arrival times, what are those improvements attributed to? What have, what have they done to make it better from how it was to a reduced...
With this route specifically, or just other routes?
In general.
It's really just getting the procedures down, I think, because, yeah, because each route, we have 10 routes that share with Diamond, it starts at Diamond Lake, every single one of them, then they go to intermediate, then they go to the middle school. So, they're late at one, they're late at them all. So, I think the procedures have improved and been very efficient at Diamond Lake, and then the, the intermediate school, middle school, are just waiting for the buses to arrive, and they're getting the kids off, getting the bus going. So, I think each principal's very cognizant of how it impacts the other schools, and they've done a great job with their staff, getting, you know, teachers out there and getting the kids off the bus.
You may have said this, but in, like, last year and in past years, how many routes were there to start the year? So, when we look at adding two buses potentially, is that compared to the number of buses that we had last year, or did we have 10 buses last year?
It's, it's pretty much the same number of buses we had last year.
Which was the same? The current, the current number of buses, or if we had?
If we added some. So, what we had last year was, so we have the three schools, we only had, whenever referred as double-tier, we had one picking up at Diamond Lake, then they'd be picking up the same students at the middle school, that all the routes in the intermediate school had their own bus. So, it's just like a sweeper bus. So, yeah, it's very similar in terms of total count. I don't think it, you know, exact count, but every bus was independent at the middle, at the intermediate school, in this example. So, we still have all these routes that are, that are shared. It would be these two sweeper buses that would be responsible for making the route shorter.
So, what, why, what made Lakeside think that we could do this with two bus buses this year, you know, initially, or was it thinking back?
Well, it's probably a combination of, you know, there's, there's no statute that really says how long a kid can ride on the bus. They have accounts that kids are riding on the bus for a longer amount of time. Same thing that says a student's bus stop can be up to a mile and a half from their house. You know, it's not a reality. We asked them, as part of this contract, to look, to eliminate essentially all of our routes and start fresh, so to try to get, you know, the most efficient routes as possible. So, you know, again, it's probably me not being proactive enough to remove these routes initially, but when you see their runtimes estimated at 40 minutes, to me, that on paper, that doesn't appear too bad. Same thing, I mean, the 59 minutes is obviously bad, and that's something that should have been a better, but when you talk to the bus companies, it's, you know, these are just route times, they're going to improve, they're going to get better. Well, they have, they've gotten worse in terms of bundling traffic. So, it, construction's only getting worse, and then winter's coming, and it's only going to get a little bit worse from there. So, I think there's a little optimism with the new company, but they've been really good with the feedback in terms of what they're actually able to perform. So, this is what essentially they said they need in terms of resources to, to get this right. And, you know, every student, without seeing all the most recent data, would be getting to school on time, and they would be not on a bus for over an hour. It'd be a half an hour, maybe, where the max we have.
Eric, if we gave you direction, how soon would they be able to enable the process?
We'd be able to get this going within a week, but we'd have to stage this, I think, in terms of, in form, getting a week to inform parents. We'd have to really figure out a good time, because every student, you know, we have 110 students that need to be informed of this change. So, what we do is we first develop new route sheets, so we have four new routes essentially we have to make. So, Route Nine and Ten will be fully redeveloped, figure out Routes 11 and 12. We communicate that out. The secretaries are fantastic in terms of notifying and knowing the parents, so I really do rely on them to help me distribute this message, and we have to pick a day. But as soon as they're able to start this, that's something I would do, and we'd pick up, you know, start time on a Monday, and then maybe right, yeah, before, and obviously before Thanksgiving break, and that will...
Does this include, like, the same number of stops? So, the stops that we have that aren't at a residence, that are at Montessori school or daycare or whatever, it includes every stop?
Yeah, this would not have a reduction in the number of stops.
Or an increase.
Pardon me?
Or an increase.
Or an increase. It'd be the same number.
Same stops, just more buses serving those same stops.
Exactly. So, I haven't heard a lot of complaints in terms of the stops themselves. There is some concern on my end about some of these ancillary stops that we have. You know, there's, I've talked to a few people about it, but there's, there's a need to go to childcare or Montessori's, things like that. I haven't pushed them to provide buses yet, so that would reduce some of the time. Because no matter what small changes we make, it wouldn't have the desired effect, really, instead of adding the buses.
So, what, if there's no other questions to ask, but do you need, would you like a direction for us to be made, or what, but do you, but is our way over here tonight?
I, I would really like to get some direction tonight, so I could at least start this process. I think it's, these kids, these families have waited enough, and I've really pushed them to this board meeting to, to come with some options. We're not, we're not changing this contract at all, we're just adding some, you know, additional routes. So, I think some direction from you guys would be enough to make it happen, and I would communicate with you guys exactly when this would happen. I'm not sure if any of your individual students are affected by this, but it's something that we're going to, you know, communicate out to everybody as soon as they give us the new route sheets. But they're waiting on us to give them some direction, yes.
At least, with direction from, from the board, I mean, you know, our parents right now can be, as to like, a solution is coming, and this is what it's going to look like. So, it needs to be patient with us, and the effective date will be, let's just say, around the fourth, that first month that we get back, and that will be, or that may be straight day.
Yeah, this, this is definitely our biggest outstanding busing item. Busing's been going very well. Now, the biggest item after this would be reducing this cost and finding ways to share that with either another district or internally.
So, do you have a, do you have a preferred solution? One bus versus two? I mean, is that the direction you want from us? One bus versus two?
Yes. I would recommend two buses at this point. One bus is not going to have an impactful solution, right? An impact on the route.
And the cost difference is less than 50% for the second, second bus?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not really going to be, going down from 50 minutes to 40 minutes is, is not going to make anybody happy. I think adding the two buses is going to get us back to what families are used to. And you, this, the solution would be a little bit easier if we had so many families that didn't have sidewalks. So, I'm really cognizant of the fact of getting in the winter months with no sidewalks, so we really need to get these kids to not wait in the bus so long.
Right.
Okay. I think the direction for us is that we would like you to proceed with the two-bus option. Does anyone have a surprise?
I agree.
We'll, we'll evaluate this throughout the course of the year, and if we need to make changes, I'd be recommending doing this over the summer, but I think this is a bigger direction for us this year. So, I appreciate it.
Great, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Moving on to the Safe Schools Information. So, in your packet are two items. One is an article about the school, excuse me, the sanctuary school, a Safe School Zone movement, and it's just background information. You can do it, just read, and get, ask any questions. So, our goal is that District, District 120, which is Little High School, adopted this a few years ago, and then they are bringing this to District 75. So, Dr. Meyer shared this with me, and thought it would be good, we all do this together as a partnership, to keep our schools to be the safe school, sanctuary schools, and then inform our staff. What we're doing, one, is the board takes action, and then publicizes it out on our website for our community members. So, I just put the article in there...
Yes. I would recommend a two buses at this point. Um, one bus is not gonna have an impactful solution, an impact on-
And the cost difference is less than fifty percent?
Yeah.
For the second, second bus?
It's, yeah, it's not really gonna be, uh, uh, going down from fifty minutes to forty minutes is, is not gonna make anybody happy. I think adding the two buses is gonna get us back to what families are used to. And you, this, the solution would be a little bit easier if we had so many families didn't have sidewalks. So I'm really cognizant of that competing in the winter months with no sidewalks. So we really need to get these kids to not wait in the bus alone.
Right.
I think the direction for us is that we would like you to proceed with the two bus option. Has anyone else raised?
Yeah, we'll, we'll evaluate this throughout the course of the year and if we need to make changes, um, I'd be recommending doing this over the summer. But I think this is a bigger direction for us in the year. So I appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Julianne. Moving on to the safe school information.
So in your packet are two items. One is an article about the school, um, excuse me, the sanctuary school, it's a school's own movement. And it's just background information. Um, you can either just read and get, um, ask any questions. So our goal is that District, District One Twenty, which is the middle high school, adopted this a few years ago. And then they are bringing this to District Seventy-Five. Um, so Dr. Meyer shared this with me, thought it would be good, we all do this together as a partnership to keep our, um, schools to be the safe school, sanctuary schools. And then inform our staff. What we're doing was to work, take action, um, and then publicize it out on our website for our community members. So I just put the article in there so you can read it, um, get some background information. Feel free to ask any questions and then also a sample of what the resolution would look like. Um, and this, I'm having it reviewed by our attorneys, but this is what District One Twenty did. So it's, it's pretty generic as far as legal terms are. So I'll just have our attorneys review it as well. And then we're hoping at the November fifth meeting, if you have any questions, you can bring those to me. And then how we're gonna kind of hold this out with our staff and our community. Um, and then November eighth meeting, we can finalize this and the board can take action.
How long has, how long?
High school, I believe this is their second year.
I'd be interested if someone from the high school just talked to us about that experience, um, especially Year One and certain years.
It's more from what Dr. Meyer shared, it's more of a proactive, proactive, preventative approach. I don't know if they'd actually use it, but just to have it really forward and I think just the climate piece of it. Especially for the older students who may be well aware, um, in mid-sylltals going on as opposed to in summer, but I would have to do that.
How long with registration, but just policies you have?
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, moving on to written informational classes. We had one, it's a film. Correct. There's communications. It's a renewed updated, um, Board of Education calendar that shows that the last meeting was canceled. Anything else?
No. Um, and I was just sharing, um, with, uh, the members of the attended facilities, the meeting, at least for the next few months, just because of storage issues, um, with the, uh, with the gym. More meetings will be in here, um, in cafeteria, or at least, uh, the next three, the next two meetings in November until we find a, well, for the explosion. So we're gonna discuss that just because of storage needs. So we'll change that on our locations. That'll be the West Oak Middle School cafeteria.
Uh, moving on to the twenty-nineteen resolutions committee report. So I want to just kind of explain essentially what this is and the procedure. Because I, I don't know if, um, our new members have had any experience or context for this. But essentially, what IASB does is every year they put forth, um, resolutions from the committee. And each committee has essentially, um, a delegate from that specific area. And then at the meeting in November, each school board that's part of IASB can send a person to vote on the resolutions. Um, so they discuss these resolutions and put them out to us. Um, if the resolutions pass, that doesn't mean that that is enacted in the school. So I think there was some confusion in our community, um, especially about Resolution One, as to where the resolution's coming from. Those are not, these resolutions, our district did not submit any of them, so they're not coming from our district. Um, also, if they pass, all that means is that IASB is going to use lobbying funds to, um, try to get the legislature to actually pass these laws. And then if the laws were to pass, then we would have the ability to either choose to enact or enact based on the different resolutions. Because I think there's maybe eighteen resolutions. Um, yeah, there's, there's eighteen different positions. So there's twelve new resolutions and there's some amendments and reaffirmations. So, um, that's the way it works. On the twenty-third, we will have someone, I think we, go and vote. Um, because there are so many and there's lots to discuss, what we wanted to do tonight was just to give everyone the opportunity to get your copy of the resolutions. And then because we do have two board meetings before we actually need to vote, um, we can have board discussion at both of those meetings and then come to kind of a consensus then. And that way, it lets everybody take a look, read through, research them as we can. So that's kind of our plan and that's a little bit of the background, um, so you can understand the way they work. I think there is confusion, at least from what I've seen, that either our district is putting forth some of these resolutions, which is not the case. Or that if it passes, this will become law, which is also not the case. So just to give you that background. So we will discuss those at that person's November meeting and then go from there. Moving on, we have what, a renewal of our IASB membership?
So this is just the paperwork that we paid our dues as a Board of Education to the Illinois Association of School Boards. They provided a quote of conduct, we, um, and then our agreement. And so just so you all know that we have a brief copy of that, um, of the code of conduct in our, um, district office cabinet room. So this is just more of our information online. And the next two documents, um, you've received this, um, not only via email, but also with the weekly updates. Is the October District Newsletter, the nine-page. And, um, I just want to point out the nice job that Mr. Cassel did of updating, um, just what it looks like. The optics are beautiful and stunning. So thank you, Eric. And then also we updated based on our new goals, priorities, the one-page snapshot of our district strategic plan snapshot of just all of our goals and target areas. And it's available in English and Spanish on our website. It's only available in English, but, um, we have copies available on our website in English and Spanish. So we just wanted to present those to you for your information.
That's all. Great. Uh, if anyone has any questions, so we will move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? No? Okay. Uh, moving on to others. Do you have any others? Okay, then we will adjourn into executive session. For the agreement employment compensation discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony out of completely alleged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district in order to determine its validity. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Lozada?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman? Candela?
Yes.
Sullivan? Thank you, Eric.